All right, we are good to go. We're live.
All right, thank you. Welcome. Interesting last couple of hours that we've had, but we're all up and running. So I will call to order the City of North Bend, Washington City Council meeting of June 1st, 2021 via virtual meeting. Would the clerk please confirm the rule?
Mayor, all council members are present except Councilmember Elwood.
Thank you.
Here.
With that, first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. There are 11 items in total. Without objection, can I get a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Gahn. Held. Second by Mr. Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much, counsel. At this time, we make room for citizen comments. If you have comments for council on a topic not on tonight's agenda, this is your time to share it with you. Indicate in the chat box or by star nine, and we'll give up to three minutes for your comments. Please start by stating your name.
Mayor, I have something interesting. My chat bar is not showing. Pardon me?
You cut out on me. Say again.
My chat bar is not showing for me. The, the bottom tool for chat, it's... Hold on. I apologize.
Work on that, Dana. I will.
Yeah, I'm holding on. I'm very sorry. The last one, it showed.
That's okay. You work on that in silent. I'm going to invite if you are a member of the public and you wish to speak, I'll give you permission to please unmute and indicate.
Yes, I'm sorry. This is Jean Buckner. I also do not see a chat option.
Oh, thank you. It wasn't just me.
Thanks, Jean. Hold on one second, and then I'll call back on you.
Thanks.
Sorry, I just wanted to interject, let the record know that Councilmember Elwood is online. He's having some technical issues. He has dialed in but is muted, so he is present. Okay?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Zoom locked me out during the power outage and my phone died. So if you can identify who this number is, then you know who I am. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sir.
Thanks for that. Thanks for that, Chris. Jean? Go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Jean Buckner, 46226 Southeast 139th Place, North Bend. Just wanted to mention that our fir trees here in Wood River seem to be suffering from what I Googled as likely sun stress and water stress. There are brown fronds in the canopy. I've seen a large number of them in my neighborhood and I'm just asking the city council to look up in and around your firs and see if you're seeing the same thing and if this is different from other years. As everyone knows, our firs, our trees are critical to North Bend's appeal to our visitors and to our health of the city and the river. And so I'm very concerned about this, and being that it's only June 1st, I'm not looking forward to what the summer might bring. A while back, I had a conversation with one of your engineers about my concerns about the impact of clearcutting for new development on shade and temperature in North Bend. And I was told that the trees sucked up a lot of water and that clearcutting reduced and saved our aquifer water for our use. Is that where we are now? Might you folks question our engineers on that? Because I've not gotten any kind of reasonable response. And also just look up to your, your firs, and generally they're in areas that are suffering from direct sun, and assess that if this is a real concern or not. I believe it could be, but I'm asking the city council to look into this problem regarding the sun stress on our firs. Also, I am not going to be able to attend the later discussion on the aquifer, but I do want to just mention that a study was done back in the mid 2000s, $450,000 study, and it's all in my comments. They determined at that time that there was no independent aquifer. And Eric Opsvig, who also was a neighbor and his area was assessed, he talked with local folks, local workers, and they said they were unable to find any difference between the aquifers that they studied. So why are we reconsidering doing a study? Yeah, I will. Why are we reconsidering another study when a pretty comprehensive $450,000 study was done? And that, that's all my comments. Please see my comments via email and also Eric Opsvig's comments, who was actually there on the spot. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Buckner. Yes, we did receive several emails from you today. Appreciate that. And I will take up your concern about the trees with our harvest. Thank you. Anyone else, Dana, did you, I don't see the chat feature yet on my screen, so I assume we still don't have that?
No, I don't. If anyone wishing to speak, which Jean is our only guest right now, so anyone wishing to speak, raise your hand. Star nine would help. I'm, I just made Bree a co-host to see if it works for her. I'm not quite sure why it's not there. I didn't, I, sorry.
We seem to be doing fine, and as you're noting, and I see the same, that we only have one guest to see.
It seems to be an issue with Zoom because none of us have the chat feature on tonight.
Okay, and I did, I do have, Brendan, if you can hear me, I did rename you on the screen, so your name is showing, not your phone number, just so you know.
Okay, and with that, we will move on to introductions. Item number 12, AB 21-063, An Ordinance Amending North Bend Municipal Code Title 18 Regarding Special Districts. Ms. Demme.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item is an ordinance to create a means for creating master plan developments in any zone district and to allow for the application of flexible standards to encourage and foster creative and innovative planning practices that will result in well-designed, efficient, and functional planning developments. The master plan overlay is applicable for all zoning districts, and the master plan designation is established through amendment to the city zoning map. We already have a handful of these overlay zones in existence, but with this code, it would give also a process for someone to apply for a new master plan overlay district. Within, it also creates a list of requirements that would need to be in a master plan, and that includes listing the existing conditions and site description, a detailed description of the transportation system within and adjacent to the site, an analysis of existing infrastructure capacity in the vicinity of and downstream from the site, consistent with our concurrency requirements, a description of all proposed development within the proposed site, a description of the mix of uses, the, what uses are permitted or conditionally permitted, all site improvements, including the approximate size and location of all buildings, surface and structure parking facilities, onsite pedestrian and vehicular circulation, transit stops, pedestrian amenities, and open space and landscape areas, as well as a preliminary infrastructure plan. This master plan will include all of its design standards, which usually include architecture, landscaping, signs, and lighting, and any proposed phasing that would be needed. The idea behind this code is to kind of clean up the existing master plan overlay districts, which is a little bit of a mess and hard for people to understand what they are and aren't allowed to do within those areas. And some of them are soon to be built out as well with approved projects across the whole way, and some of them are duplicated. For instance, our code has a transitional landscape area listed and a critical areas overlay, which are both redundant as the transitional landscape area are addressed within 18.18 of our municipal code, and the critical areas is also covered by our city's critical area regulations. So we're trying to clean up the, the whole process, make it simpler, make it easier to understand, as well as create a continuity of development, compatible architecture within a project, pedestrian connections, and some flexibility within a master plan area. I'll be happy that that's the real basis of the whole idea, and I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Before we turn to public comment, is any clarifying questions from council? Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, just going through the packet, I want just to make sure I understand this correctly. The underlying zone, the bulk and dimensional standards will stay in place, but there appears to be the ability for changes with density. But if those changes are made, if I'm correct, that does go back in front of council. If, if I'm reading the packet correctly, I just want to verify that. If you could, Rebecca, thank you.
Yes, so the under, this requires that the master plan match the under, the intent of the underlying designation. So if it is a commercial-only underlying designation, they would not be able to do residential without coming back to you. And vice versa. If it is an all-residential, you may have some mixed-use neighborhood commercial, but you wouldn't be able to do a commercial project over the whole thing without changing the underlying designation. The bulk and dimensional standards is a little bit of a, is different. It's the intent and the direction, but this allows for a differentiation of the requirements as long as the intent within our comp plan underlying designation is met.
And Rebecca, just to follow up specifically on the residential side, if we do something there, the density can change, is that correct? And if so, it does have to at least go back in front of council. Am I 100% right on that, or?
That is correct. So if they apply for any kind of development standards that are different than our code, then that gets approved by council and incorporated into this section of code. However, if they propose development standards that are within the requirements, and since no changes to density, but they want buildings to all have a similar architectural feel, or all buildings have a similar landscaping feel or lighting feel, then it wouldn't necessarily need to go back to you because it would all meet the existing development regulations. The reason they're doing a master plan is to create a specific type of community. So yes, any changes to the development standards would come back to council for adoption and codifying it within this section of code.
Rebecca, thank you so much for spelling it out for me. I'm a little slow on these things.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Ms. Colan?
Isn't there one area that is amended to not be part of this plan? Maybe I read it wrong. The USOD, I think, by Meadowbrook.
So the urban separator overlay is actually the very first section. It's not currently considered a master plan overlay. It's just considered a general overlay. We have proposed to keep it in this ordinance, however, because that one would require an amendment to the comp plan to remove it, we are not proposing that at this time. We will come back with, to you later this year with our comp plan update that cleans up the boundaries of these overlay districts and cleans up the language to make it even simpler. For instance, like you said, the urban separator is, the only difference in those are the allowable uses between the neighborhood business in the urban separator. So my suggestion to, what I was planning on bringing back to you in the future was a neighborhood business 1 and a neighborhood business 2. There's no reason for an overlay district in that zone in the future because really the only difference is the allowable use chart. So we can create a new zone that still meets the comp plan requirements. But again, that's not what we're discussing right now. We're only, the only one that was removed from the language was the Tanner Landing within the code because Tanner Landing is completely covered by the, by Dahlgren and the park within that whole overlay. So we will bring that map back to you as part of the comp plan to match the approved project.
Is that the answer to the question? That's cool.
I guess so. I guess we're going to revisit it later this year.
So, correct, because we, because we can only do a comp plan update once a year, we had to incorporate that with our full overall comp plan update we are working on. So we didn't want to bring too many complicated ordinance changes along with the comp plan update, and so we will bring the actual map changes back at a future date. But if you look at the ordinance in the very first section, the general overlays, the urban separator overlay district is still there and hasn't proposed to change in this code.
Any follow-up, Heather?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Garcia?
I'm mute.
It was so good when he was.
Could we just make sure that Mr. Elwood, since we can't see him, gets, gets a chance to ask a question?
Certainly will. Anyone else before we check with Mr. Elwood? Ms. Miller?
Yeah, I, I was just questioning, is Tollgate Farms somehow a part of this? I saw that it was referenced, but I didn't see anything, or I'm missing something on that?
Um, that's a park. I'm not, I don't believe it's within an master plan overlay district currently, so I don't think it's affected.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
I think the, oh, that's the urban separator overlay district does mention that it includes Meadowbrook and Tollgate Farms, but we're not touching that requirement now as part of this proposal.
Okay, thanks for that.
Space, it wouldn't be touched.
Right.
Mary, anything follow-up?
Nope, that's good. Just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Elwood, did you have anything? You are muted.
How about now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay, great. I have two mute buttons, one, one to star six and one my phone. Thank you for checking on me and thank you for that, that air cover there, Chris. I don't have any questions on this one, but I do on the next one, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item? Lacking our usual chat box, you may unmute. If you would like to speak on this item. Hearing none, I did see one other member of the public just joining the mid, the meeting. Mr. Moody, we're on item 12, considering AB 21-063. If you wanted to speak on this item, now is the time. You may unmute and indicate. We don't have a chat box this evening.
Teresa Patton for Don Moody, and no, no comment on that.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, with that, let me see. If I've got my head on straight. Ms. Miller, CED Committee, you're the chair of that?
I am.
Well, there we go. I believe this came through your committee. Would you like to make the recommended action?
I would. I'd like to, I would like to have this go through, so AB, let's make this happen. AB 121-063, Ordinance Amending NBMC Title 18 Regarding RE Special Districts. Like to have this motion to be approved.
Thank you. I have a second. Mr. Rosen?
Second, second. Okay.
So I have a motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Rosen. Any conversation by council question before we vote?
Your Honor, maybe, maybe a point of order, Your Honor?
Yes.
The, the motion, I didn't think was read as specifically outlined in the, in the packet.
If it's.
Let me get back to.
So I'm just calling it. This is page 223.
And if you appreciate, if, I was going to read the full motion as.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Hold on.
I think we're fine.
There we go. Let, let me start over. May I? Motion to approve AB, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to approve AB 21-063, An Ordinance Repealing NBMC 18 dot 10 dot 025 Relating to Special Districts and Creating and Adopting a New MBMC Chapter 18 dot 13 Relating to Special Districts as a First and Final Reading.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen, do you confirm your second?
Second.
It does indeed. I have a motion and a second on AB 21-063. Instead of rereading it immediately after, any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous, and with Mr. Elwood here, that's seven a. Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, item number 13, AB 21-064, A Motion Authorizing a Contract with Goldar for Deep Well Study. Mr. Regus?
Thank you, Mayor Rob. Good evening, City Council, page 265 in your packet. With us tonight is Nicole DeNovio. She is, she is a PhD. She's a principal at Goldar Associates. She's an expert in groundwater hydrology, and she helped the city secure additional water rights back in 2005 through 2008. So she might be able to better answer any detailed technical questions than myself. Just backtracking a little bit here, we've been having quarterly mitigation water meetings for the last year or so, year and a half, and we're evaluating many of these mitigation options. And we've got five or six on the hot burner, so to speak, and this mitigation deep well aquifer ideas is on the medium-warm burner, and it could be a really nice option for the City of North Bend moving forward. This scope will work, this contract between the city and Goldar, it's just a study. It's, it's not a, there's no construction here, so it's a, it's a pretty small amount compared to the $450,000 number that was done 15, 16 years ago. And I believe there were a lot of tasks as part of that, that work. So we'd like to move this forward. Provide, there's a pretty detailed work scope on page 267, and in a few months, we'll look, know a lot more about this potential mitigation option, which, one of the beauties of it is that we can mitigate, we have to, we have to later mitigate while we mitigate, but there's plenty of water, possibly down 500 feet or so. That's the hope, is that in August, September, October, we could pull water from very deep in the aquifer below Snoqualmie Falls. What was drilled back in 2005 only goes a couple hundred feet deep, and this would go quite a bit deeper. So I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions or move those over to Nicole if there's any questions from council.
First off, we'll ask again before we move to the public, we'll ask if there are any clarifying questions, not, not discussion and debate, clarifying questions from council, Ms. Colan?
Per your report, there's only two areas that you'll be able to drill and look for water. What is, how likely is that you'll be able to get through the bedrock that you talk about? Is it pretty likely, or you don't know?
We, the city owns one or two acres there along Tanner Road, so it's not a huge area. It's about 400 feet by 200 feet or so. So I would, to answer your question, I'll, I'll ask Nicole and see, she knows the, the groundwater situation better than myself.
Thanks, Mark. So I think there's maybe a little bit more to the question other than just the Tanner Road parcel that the city owns. There's, the way the water rate was originally written in 1992 was that there were two quarter-quarter sections that were identified for potential withdrawals for a deep mitigation well. And so ultimately, based on that water rate application with the 1992 priority date, those are the areas that are available for use for that application. And so our scope is to, of course, preferentially look at that Tanner Road property. There's been a number of wells drilled in that area. And also, you know, to take a step back and make sure that we're integrating the information in the basin and any new well drilling and other data that's been collected since then, which includes some geophysical information further down the Snoqualmie Valley. What we're aiming for is not actually bedrock in this case. Bedrock is what you see when you're at Snoqualmie Falls and when you look at Mount Si. What's really interesting about the upper Snoqualmie Basin is it was filled with lots of sediment. So the glaciers came in and they created a sort of big gouge that you kind of sense when you're standing there, that those sides of the valley go much, much deeper underneath your feet. And then the middle of the valley is filled with a group of sediments that are sands and gravels. And then some places, there's things that are called lacustrine deposits where it was, where you live used to be a big lake, and so there's really fine-grained lacustrine deposits in places in, in the valley. And then there's other places in the valley where, as the glaciers receded or advanced, that they created a ground-up rock called till. And if you, if you've seen till or you've had till on your property, you'll know it's very impermeable and hard to, hard to manage because it's a combination of clay and, and pulverized rock, basically. And so what we're looking for is one of those sanding and gravel units that are underneath, so delayed connection to the river, because the river sits nice and high. So we want to go underneath one of those layers that slow down the connection between the river and those deeper layers. So we want to find one of those places where there's lacustrine deposits or even better, till, that separate the water that's underneath from the water that's in the river, and that would be our target zone.
Nicole, I just would like you to clarify something you said right at the start. I believe you've referenced quarter-quarter sections. So would you just make sure we all understand how many acres that is? And reference Mark was talking about 200 and 400 feet, I think, you know, yards. But quarter section is much larger than that, right? So.
Right. And so we're not going to start with looking, you know, everywhere, because each quarter, quarter section is 40 acres.
Say, I want to have them have a relative understanding of the size of the area that you have to choose a location.
Right. So, so we'll obviously look at parcels that are owned by the city first in those, those sections. And so each one of those sections is, is 40 acres that we'll be able to take a look at.
Thank you. Ms. Colan, you still have?
I'm good. I think the science, it's fascinating, and I love hearing you talk about it. Thanks.
Rose on me, but you're, I heard you say you're good. Any other clarifying questions from council?
I, I have one, Your Honor.
Yes.
And, and please, if, if this doesn't qualify as a clarifying question, that's, that's fine. We can table it for the other part of the Q and A here. But Mark, you, you've mentioned and made mention to a 2000, the 2005 study and that this particular exercise is to. Pardon?
It was breaking up me or you, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. Is this better? Is it there? Okay. So I'll speak louder, just in case. Mark, you made mention in your introduction that to the 2005 study that Goldar did, and one of the key differences between now and then was the two, we, going beyond 200-foot depth to explore the aquifers. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is there's been much testimony, and especially Mr. Opsvig's testimony, who essentially lived that moment, that was talking about how this same exercise was done back then and the determination. that was talking about how this same exercise was done back then, and the determination was that there, everything's in one aquifer. So I'm wondering if you could just clarify a little bit more detail as to what's the difference between now and then, since the 2005 study is what folks are bringing up as a big, hey, why are you reliving history? We already know the answers.
Yeah, I'll, I'll preface that answer first by saying that I wasn't here in 2005, so I don't have a detailed history of it. But, and Nicole, did you want to try to answer that? You were supporting the city at that point back, and this, I think, was just one of the options, mitigation options before the city settled on Hobo Springs. But maybe you can answer Brendan's question.
Yeah, and I see Councilmember Garcia nodding because he, he was there at that time, too. You know, honestly...
What was the tilt?
So I, I wasn't part of the project when the drilling was done for the wells that were tested as part of the ecology funded study. So I, I can't fill in all of the gaps of that history, Councilmember Elwood, but I can try to fill in some of them. So there was about 10 different wells, pilot wells, that were drilled throughout the basin as part of that study. That's one of the reasons why it was so, so large a cost, because drilling wells is really expensive. And what happened at that point was there was an agreement to test a particular well, and that was selected before it was drilled because of its location and the ability to get power there. So there were a lot of logistical decisions. When they went to drill that well, they were only about 100 feet from another well, and they found that the bedrock that we were talking about before was over 50 feet shallower over basically a very, very short distance. And what we're seeing is at the edges of the basin, that we have a bedrock surface that's kind of going like this. It's undulating. It's going up and down and up and down. And when it's on the down part, we've got that lower aquifer that we're really interested in. When it's on the up part, we don't have that lower aquifer. We just have the shallow aquifer that's all nicely in hydraulic continuity with the river. It happened to be that the well that had been selected for testing was that shallower, part of that shallower system. And so that's what's different, is that we now, you know, that testing was done, there's exploration drilling that was done. But at the time, we were able to identify another mitigation source. And so the city had decided that it would advance the Part A of the 1992 application with the Hobo Springs as its mitigation source. And then there was the Part B part of the application, and deciding that we would wait until a lot of other people drilled wells, and there would be more studies, and there would be more information about the basin. And so now it, it's time, the Department of Ecology is working through all of those back applications. And so we want to take a look at all of the science, the wells that have been drilled for the city of Snoqualmie, the other wells that have been drilled in the area, look at all of that data and all of that information, and then come back to council and tell you what we've learned over that decade of time, and then give some options in terms of how to proceed with this rate and, and testing. So that's where we are. Did we answer your question?
It does. So if I were to just kind of parrot it back in layman's terms, there was some drilling done, you only went so deep, the wells that were impacted were above the bedrock. There's the potential that there's aquifers under the bedrock. So now we're going to go deeper, but we're also going to analyze all those data from then until now with all of the other wells, whether they're high or low, above or below the bedrock, to really get a better understanding of what lays below the bedrock with our, with our water system. Is that kind of a crude, but ignorant, a crude but fair synopsis of what you just said?
Almost, except that bedrock in this case is, is what's on the bottom. And so what we're looking for is those units that I was talking about before that are either the till units or the lacustrine units that are between the shallow aquifer that is our nice sanding aquifer that supplies the Centennial well, and deep, deep in the basin, there's some intervening units, and we're trying to find those intervening units and get below them. And in some places, that'll be the same gap that we would run into bedrock, which is what happened the first time, that, that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything more?
Thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Regos, what would, it, just a ballpark estimate, if we, if we discover what we're hoping to discover, how much would a well cost here?
It would probably be, I'd say a quarter of a million dollars to, to get down to drill it. But then we've got to have, you know, a pump house, discharge, there's permitting. It may not actually cost that much. It would, I believe it would be less than a million dollars, could be on the order of half a million dollars. But, you know, I don't, obviously don't have any design plans. I haven't talked to contractors. You know, it's, it's not, this isn't millions and millions of dollars. This could be between a half million and a million.
And how much would it cost us to come to terms with a contract with the Salawater Association?
That question for me?
That's impossible at this time, Mr. Garcia.
It's what?
That is not an answer we'd be able to give you at this time.
Well, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost us anything, right, to, to get the contract, right? It would cost us down the road, right? So the reason I ask these questions is, is some perspective of, I think there's a couple of us here, shockingly enough, that were here in 2005, and the, the, the ultimate goal was always, this contract with Salaw, which they were at the table the whole time with back then, was the most likely and best scenario to, to do this. And this was always one of those things that we would look at down the road, but this was going to be the, the magic bullet to get us out of our situation.
I understand. With, with respect, I think we're going away from questions and into discussion, but I do understand the question. Thank you. Do you have other questions clarifying?
No.
Thank you. Anyone else clarifying? Here, let me, let me, let me...
I'm sorry, Ms. Colan.
I'm sorry. How, how long will this study take before you know what you need to know?
Go ahead, Nicole.
Great. We put a fairly aggressive schedule together to spend just a little bit over a month collecting all of that information and reviewing it. You know, obviously, we have some good files from the work that was done over a decade ago. And then we'd like to come back and then have a, a work session with Public Works and, and look at the options at that point. We'll also, at that point, be working to reach out to other stakeholders and make sure that we have options that stakeholders understand and that we can move forward in a positive way.
Page 269 in your packet, there's a schedule for elapsed time, Heather. So it totals about 18 weeks. Some of those steps may be able to be done concurrently, though not all have to be done sequentially. So it'll be a few months at least.
Anyone else, or has that moved to public comment? Seeing none. If you have not already spoken on this item and wish to speak on it now, you may unmute and indicate who you are.
And then I will call on you, and you will have three minutes.
Sorry. I'm okay. Hearing background noise, okay. Hearing none, then we'll move on.
Mr. Laudenbach, I believe this came through your committee?
Mr. Laudenbach has having some...
He has some issue, I see. He bounced, didn't he?
Yes, he's, he's coming back in. He's got some connectivity issues. He got dropped because our internet here at City Hall is super fabulous, so I'm going to stall for a second while he gets back on.
I see him back on screen. Mr. Laudenbach, I'm calling on you as the Chair of the TPW Committee. If you wanted to make the motion, you'll be unmuted.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve AB 21-064, authorizing a contract with Goldar Associates in, to perform a deep well water mitigation study in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney in an amount not to exceed $32,718.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Miller. A motion by Mr. Laudenbach, second by Ms. Miller. Counsel, discussion, Mr. Laudenbach, did you want to speak to us?
I, I think the, the issue is that we want to have complete information moving forward. This is a review of secondary materials and could lead to a possible deep well mitigation source for the city that would be cost effective. Not that we should stop trying to, you know, work all the other available mitigation sources, but this does have a possibility, and Ms. DeNovo could probably speak to the possibility of the seasonal recharge if they were able to identify a separated deep well aquifer.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, did you have anything?
Well, in, in what, what Ross said, I completely stand back, and, and I really appreciate the information that Nicole gave us tonight for further understanding, a deeper discussion of understanding. I think it's a very interesting project going forward. I think the money, not being $450,000 like the earlier project, this is a smaller increment of money, but it could be very valuable in understanding how we move forward. So I think it's an education and a very big way to, you know, let's see what the future can hold, digging deeper.
Thank you. Any other council member wish to speak on this item?
Seeing none. The motion before you is to approve AB 21-064, authorizing a contract with Goldar Associates Incorporated to perform a deep well water mitigation study in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney in an amount not to exceed $32,718. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. That is the last formal agenda item on, on tonight's agenda. We will move to Mayor, Council, and Administrator Concerns and Initiatives. Let me see, who is first on my list tonight? Mr. Laudenbach?
Being first is certainly a privilege, and I won't abuse it. So nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Very much. Mr. Godhill?
Thank you. Just as we start to get into the warmer weather and graduation time, just everybody, watch everybody out there, goat cats and the 2021 graduates as we begin to see parades begin to happen and all the excitement moving up to graduation. And congratulations to those members of our community where they graduated from college, a lot that locally graduated from various colleges throughout Western Washington and Washington. So congratulations to those people, too.
Thank you very much. Ms. Miller?
Yes. Yesterday, I was very fortunately able to get out to the City Hall for the memorial event we had there. It was lovely to see the space used, and I, I was very impressed. It was an emotional situation of very moving. Kathy Lambert was there and spoke, and that was very special. I just, Brennan was there, of course. It was nice to see Brennan. And I just was really impressed, and I think we all should, I know, really speak from the heart here about how we should care about our veterans, the people that are, you know, moving mountains, basically risking their lives each and every day in the past and in the future. So there's a lot of veterans out there with emotional and physical infirmary, infirmaries and emotional support. Mental illness is very rampant, and we need to just be very, very kind to all of our veterans. And when you see them, be sure to say thank you. That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Colan?
Um, that was very nice, Mary, and I can't follow that. But what I would like to say, there is a really nice program through the Snoqualmie Valley Transportation. It's called Summer Freedom, and it allows riders who are 18 or younger to ride for free between June 1st and August 31st. Nobody under the age of 10, they have to be accompanied, but it's a great way to see friends, go to the lake, get a summer job, enjoy the summer.
Thank you. Good program, indeed. Mr. Rosen?
Thanks, Mary, for what you said about the veterans. They are the true heroes, and he's in their debt. All of us, I'm sure are. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. First of all, yay to graduation. I have two graduating kids, one from college, one from high school, so this is going to be party central, I think. So yes, I agree with my colleague sentiments about being careful out there with the grads, so I'm really excited about that. The other thing I'd like to add is that, yes, it was great to see you too, Mary, and it was a moving moment. And I love to see the City Hall being used for a ceremony, such as what we had, that Post Commander Rocky Martinez coordinated for Memorial Day. I, I had prepared words to speak yesterday, but thankfully, Post Commander was recognizing that it was hot, and we had a lot of Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts there. So it was, let's, let's, let's say some moving things, keep it beautiful and short, but let's get to the point. But to that end, I did prepare some words, so I figured now would be a good time for me to just, just present them so that they're not lost, and just for me to be able to share my particular thoughts. It is important to keep present in our minds and hearts what we have, how we're able to move freely about our space and our time. And it has come at the highest of all costs, human life, members of our families, members of our communities, American lives. Sadly, threats to our democracy are ever present, which means our society will continue to have to pay this cost in perpetuity. But this is another reason why it is important for us to remember who has come before and the price they paid, so that we may continue to evolve and refine who we are as a people, and how we should strive to do better than we did before, for their sake, for their memory. So that every life that has been taken was not, nor is not, in vain, rather a necessary expense for freedom, for our freedom. It may seem easy for me to say these words, but trust that I don't take them for granted. Because I have never fought in a war, nor have I had to prove my salt on the battlefield, so I can only imagine the fear and courage one must muster to move forward, knowing that death is imminent, to see death is here and still push to persevere. The most I can do is to try and relate to what the experience must be like, to try to, to try and authentically understand that reality, their reality for our freedom. To do this effectively, it is also therefore important that we listen, especially to those who can roll their sleeves up and bear the emotional and physical scars of this reality, their reality for our freedom. Listening leads to better understanding and deeper meaning for why and how we should remember. When I vote in a free and fair election, or carry about my day, not needing to worry about being bombed, or taken hostage, or to buy groceries at the local market, or to travel anywhere in this great country on a whim, or to stand on a street corner and lawfully assemble and protest the injustices I see, all of these things, whether they be remarkable or not, impressive or trivial, are afforded to me because of those who have fought, sorry, those who have fought... those who have fought to ensure this context, this luxury, our freedom. In closing, it is and should be expected of me to remember the great losses given for the gains available to me. It is and should be expected of me that I honor the great sacrifices of all of those who have served and died, to remember their reality for our freedom. May God bless their souls and may we all remember. Thank you. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Elwood. Great sentiments. Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Garcia, you are up, sir.
I have to go after that?
Yep, you have to go after. You have to follow it.
Seriously. Well said, Mr. Elwood. I, too, came to the function on Monday and then chickened out because there were so many people here that I was just, didn't get out of my car. I drove through the parking lot, waved at the guy selling the food truck and kind of drove up and down North Bend way a few times. And just, you know, a lot of times we do things that just kind of go unnoticed or they're mundane, you know, business of running the city. This Veterans Memorial is something that's been in the works for a long time, not due to anybody's fault, long overdue, always something came up. But it was just extremely touching for me to see that being used. So I'd like to thank Mr. Rigos, who put in a ton of work on that, and Mr. Martinez. And I know they worked together with that. And so, so thank you both and thank you for all those that were involved. And happy Memorial Day and please don't ever forget the people that made sacrifices before us and well after us. But it was just, it was just a neat experience to see people at City Hall, you know, something we haven't really got to enjoy. I mean, we could have used some better blinds, maybe in the adjournment room. And we've got to fix this Wi-Fi problem here. But, you know, it was nice to see City Hall being used as one of the functions that it was used for. I echo to the graduation sentiments. I mean, sometimes it just never ceases to amaze me how much Alan and Brendan have in common. They both have kids that graduated from college and kids that graduate from high school. I mean, it's like, they should go out and have a beer and celebrate together, I think. It would be outstanding. They could have, talk about what a great year 2021 was and have an adult beverage and just chat. It would be great.
Chris, have you noticed we never see them both at the same time?
Yes. It's good, but maybe this is something that could happen, so.
It could be one and the same.
One and the same, same team. I digress. Anyways, I just wish everybody a safe and happy last few weeks of school. Any of you kids out there watching this, please, please, please be safe. Don't drink and drive. Don't race each other. This is, this is one of the most dangerous times for teenage drivers and the numbers are up. And a lot of it has to do with speeding because a lot of, there's not as many cars on the road. So, but any of you parents or kids are out there watching this, please be safe. This isn't the time of the year for tragedy. And thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I think to the question for Mr. Elwood, we may need to offer to buy because, as you noted, they each had a child graduating college. I don't think the money's on the table.
Mr. Rigos, acting city administrator this week, do you have anything for the administration?
Yeah, a couple items. So Brendan, great speech. I'm glad I'm not following you. There's a whole bunch on our consent agenda that was approved tonight. So I just want to say thank you to City Council for providing your trust and support and staff and moving this, all this work forward. So really appreciate that. And that kind of segues into one of the items that got approved tonight, which was the sidewalk repair project. So first want to say thanks to Tom Moore for managing that project. It went very smoothly. And I want to say thank you to Garcia and Ross, Jonathan, Alan, Brendan and Mary and Heather as well for recognizing how important that is for public safety. So we probably saved a bunch of future injuries by doing that work. And so just maybe pat yourself on the back, but thank you from staff as well. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rigos. I appreciate that. Yes, it was an impactful agenda and sometimes we lose track of that.
Well, I'm not going to be anywhere near as eloquent as a few of you have been tonight. I've got more of the mundane. But the first thing that's not mundane that I wanted to call attention to with everyone here on the call, welcome to Greg Palander, newest employee. He is Deputy Finance Director, just started with us just about a week ago. We welcome him and the support that he'll be bringing to our entire finance group. So welcome, Greg. And on the mundane side of things, perhaps, yard waste recycling, available this Saturday, June 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at Public Works. Program is open to all residents living in the 98045 zip code. We, it accepts grass clippings, leaves, weeds and branches and limbs up to three feet long and three inches in diameter. And I'll just emphasize 98045, so not just city limits, the whole zip code. If for some reason it escaped you in public announcements, riding road will be closed for three months, beginning in mid-June in order for King County to rebuild roughly 775 feet of reventment along the Snoqualmie River. That's basically a barrier on the river to prevent erosion. The road will be closed between Southeast 81st Street and 428th Avenue Southeast with a detour available through North Bend. So be expecting a little bit more traffic coming through town. More information about the project and the detour is available on the news section of the city website. In addition to that, for King County, King County has opened the next round of its eviction prevention and rental assistance program. The program helps people experiencing financial hardship due to COVID-19 who are at risk of housing instability or homelessness. The program is funded by the Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act and will help King County residents by paying past, current and future rent and targeting resources for people in need. More information about this assistance program is also available on the news section of the city's website. And finally, I am very pleased to share that the North Bend Farmers Market will kick off its 15th season on June 10th at Si View Metropolitan Park. The market is open from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. every Thursday through September 9th and features fresh produce, specialty products, flowers, tasty treats and handmade gifts. For more information, once again, visit the community calendar on the city's website. And that is my announcements for this evening. If there's nothing more, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Garcia?
So I randomly met one of our other new employees, Bryce. Maybe you could explain who he is. He was walking up to the door and I was like, can I help you? And he's like, I work here. I'm like, oh, me too.
Also joined us, he is a North Bend resident and he joined the finance group about six weeks ago, I believe. So he's not our newest employee, but he also joined the finance group. We had some promotions and shuffling going on in the group. So overall, it did not grow, is we've just shuffled around a little bit. Thanks for calling my attention to this. Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion on this, Godhill, second by Mr. Rosen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. I see you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Have a good evening.
Good night. Bye.
Bye.